Everybody, I'd like to call the meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council to order. Welcome everybody here, and if you would please remember to silence your electronic devices, and if you would stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our amazing city and the people who call it home. We thank you for the gift of community, and especially for the right to self-govern. We ask your blessings upon our great nation. Help us to look beyond our differences and safeguard the common good of all. Grant us here tonight wisdom as we strive to advance good public policy for the benefit of all of our citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, I think everybody's catching on to this, but for those of you who may not come to too many council meetings, we do have a custom of beginning each meeting with a historical or fun fact concerning our city or the region, and we rotate that duty, and tonight it falls upon councilmember Chambers.
Well, thank you.
He always does a great job because he's lived through most of the history here, so...
Thank you, and this is about the history of me and my perspective. So, yes, it's not really a fact, but it's my facts. My family came to Temple Terrace from Tampa in 1968. My dad was a professor at University of Tampa, and then he got a job at the brand-new way, 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 way out University of South Florida, which it was at that time, and he commuted for a number of years, and then he got a, we got a house in Temple Terrace in 1968. I was 11. We were the last house on White Way Drive. White Way did not go through. It stopped just past 62nd Street, and from White Way all the way to Gillette was Orange and Grapefruit Groves. So, the first thing I learned the second day I was here in Temple Terrace was the way the city called its volunteer firefighters. The firefighters were all volunteers at that time, I believe, and it was way before electronic devices, and the way they called their firefighters, remember, I'm a child that kind of remembered the Cuban Missile Crisis in Tampa, living near MacDill, so you knew that, and then also during the Cold War. So, at that time, to call the volunteer firefighters, it was a siren on top of the old library or post office, which was across from Corpus Christi, and the siren was like an air raid siren. So, my second day here, the siren goes off, and I am ducking, covering in my bedroom. That's true. It was scary at the time, but that's the thing, and that, I don't know how long that, they had the siren, probably about another year or so, and then it went away. The roads, some of the roads in Temple Terrace were still shell roads. They weren't dirt, but they were shell, white-packed shell, and every now and then Public Works would grade the shell and then spray it with tar or oil. I guess we certainly don't do that now, but 62nd Street, right at my house in Richland, down the road, they were that way, and they first get the tar on them, and you couldn't be on them for a day or two, because if you did, your bicycle tires got gummed up. And then, after a while, the tar would wear off, and then it would become white chalk again, and then every time a car or bike went on there, it got, white dust would go all over and get on everything. So, then the Public Works people at that time decided that if you put an aggregate rock in the tar, it may last longer, so I think the RFP that went out was, we need rocks that are the sharpest corners of, on them at all, as bad as diamonds. So, when they put those on, especially 62nd Street, when you wrecked on your bicycle, you just got tore up.
That's true.
So, that was our roads. Back then, 7-11s and convenience stores didn't exist, so when mom ran out of milk, and it was when the hours Publix wasn't open, because they weren't open like they are now, there was a milk machine, a drive-up milk machine, on the corner of 56 and Temple Terrace Highway, Bullard Parkway, where the old Burger King used to be, so that's not there now. Fountain shops are there now. So, we'd go at night and drive up, and my job was to get out of the car, put the money in the machine, and get the gallon of milk or whatever. So, we had that. Then, walking anywhere in the city or riding your bike, especially coming home from Little League games, you just, if you were thirsty, you just went to someone's house, and you would go to their garden hose, attach to their house. You didn't know these people. The hose was there. You'd turn the water on, and that's when I learned two valuable things. Let the water run for a little while when you first turn it on, because if not, it was very, very hot in the summer, and also lizards lived in the garden hose, so you wanted those... I hope other people have done this. And then the last thing from my perspective was Temple Terrace had its own mosquito spraying truck, and it was not like now where we call it county, and it was way before the nice, whatever they spray now, but it was a thick, billowing, white cloud. I don't know if anybody remembers that. It was so cool to ride your bike in that cloud, and, I mean, it was, and so much so, my mom would hear it first for some reason, or my dad, and they'd hear it, and they'd say, "The mosquito truck's coming," and the kids would come out of the houses, and we'd ride behind it. Now, you tried not to breathe while you're in the cloud, but I did sometimes, and I realize now, looking back, is that's when I decided I might want to work for the city. So, that was that. So, that's the perspective of me in 1968, when I first moved into the terrace, so...
I think that's been one of the best ones we've had since we started this. That's terrific.
It does explain a lot, though.
It does, yeah. It does.
I remember the mosquito spray.
Yes, you do.
We rode our bikes around.
I remember the mosquito trucks, too. That's pretty good. So, the house that you grew up in, is it still there?
Yes.
I know the people who live in it.
Really?
Yeah, her brother and family.
It's not in your family anymore?
No, no. I lost that battle with Beth.
Well, that was very good. Thank you. I think that was probably one of the best ones we've had yet, so we should just adjourn now and call it a night, right? So, our first order of business is appointments to the Board of Adjustment, and as you all will recall, I won't rehash the whole thing, but we had an issue here where all the Board of Adjustment members were on the same term, and therefore, the Board of Adjustment members were all going to turn them out at the same time, so we made a slight tweak to the ordinance to stagger their terms, so they will be appointed to different-length terms tonight. And so, a little background. So, the Board of Adjustment is established in accordance with the city's Code of Ordinances. Council recently approved ordinance 1567 to change the terms of BOA members from two years to up to three years with staggered terms. That's what I was just talking about. The city has received three applications from Eric Kravitz, Mark McKinney, and Stan Cope, who is with us tonight. We, as a reminder, we asked the board members to be reapplying to, if their preference, to see if we could honor their preference of the length of terms that they had, and it turned out that it worked out, because Mr. Cope and Mr. Kravitz both requested three-year terms, and Mr. McKinney requested a two-year term, so it did work out the way we had hoped. I see Mr. Cope is here. Mr. Cope, would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but if you're here, if you'd like to, you're welcome.
We'll be very brief.
Very good. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. I have enjoyed the last several years of working on the board and working with the city and a lot of the city officials. It's been a great pleasure to serve the people of Temple Terrace and work with you all, especially one, I think, Mr. Chambers, who has been at many of our meetings and has been a fantastic guide to help me get started, as well as the city attorney, who has taught me a whole lot about the laws and places that I didn't know about, so thank you very much. I appreciate that as well. I'd also like to extend my support to my two peers that you have as well, and for you, Mr. McKinney and Mr. Kravitz. I feel like as a board, we have worked quite well together. I certainly look forward to working both of them as we go forward. So, my thanks for what you have already done, and my thanks if you choose to support me for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cope, and thank you for your service to the city. So, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Stan Cope, Eric Kravitz, as members of the Board of Adjustment for terms extending from August 2024 until August 2027?
So, moved.
Subject.
Is there a motion, a second discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Yeah, hold on just a second. Do we need a... Yes.
I just wanted to commend Mr. Cope. He's chairman of the BOA, and he does an excellent job running the meetings. Thank you very much.
He does. I was at one recently, so thank you very much again for your service. And so, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Mark McKinney as a member of the BOA for a term extending from August 2024 until August 2026?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Those three members are reappointed, and I'd like to thank all three of them for their service to the city. Next item is approval of the minutes from our August 6 council meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, is there a motion?
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. The minutes are adopted. Next section of the meeting is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. There are forms in the back of the room to request to address the council. Please give, complete the form and give it to our city clerk, who's down at the end of the dais. We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all members from the public comments for each member, and we asked its speakers, come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. I currently have no requests. We do have a couple of members of the public here, or there any, nobody wishes to address the council. Okay. Next, ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, no nays. The consent agenda is adopted. Next is a resolution approving an easement agreement with the Tampa Electric Company for storm hardening facilities within city-owned parcel, within the city-owned parcel identified And I don't know who's going to speak to this, because my notes are...
I thought that's consent.
Oh, that's on the consent? My apologies. My mistake. Next item is a public hearing on the petition to vacate Broadway Avenue, and I have a note here that the petition has been withdrawn and no action is required by the council. Is there any comment, city attorney, or anybody on that? Okay. Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending code section 14-72 concerning local business tax or finance operations manager Jamie Devey is here to explain. Good evening. It's been a while since we saw you at one of our meetings.
Yes. Hello. Good evening. So, as we reported last time that we spoke to city council several months ago, the finance department has been auditing the city's local business tax receipts, BTR is what we normally call it for framework. The current fee schedule is really cumbersome, and it has around 679 business categories and/or subcategories. Many of the business activities listed within the current schedule are no longer applicable to the 21st century, and the clarification is kind of needed on others. This current schedule makes it difficult for city staff and business owners to navigate through the process. These proposed changes to the schedule of fees will make the process cleaner and simpler by reducing these 679 categories down to just four main categories, then with 62 business types underneath those. These changes will fix some of these current inconsistencies and will assist in applying these fees correctly moving forward. The city staff recommends adopting this proposal for a more straightforward and efficient process, and we do believe it'll be a great benefit to our residents, our business owners, and multiple of our city departments.
Thank you, Ms. Devey. Is there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmembers, questions? I know there, I have some, so councilmember Fernandez.
To begin, do, as part of this process, did you all look at neighboring jurisdictions and other similar-sized cities in order to establish what are, what would be the reasonable business codes and fees?
Yes, actually, when we came last time, we had already done a study when we were looking at amending for the warehouse situation, and we had, I think it was Kimley Horn, if I'm not mistaken, do a study for us with a different neighboring cities, and right now with our ordinance, we have to kind of stay similar. So, we are able to make changes at the moment. We cannot raise anyone above what they are now. So, what we just did is we just kind of narrowed down in some categories and made it more broader for these different businesses to fit within there, so they're not having a million different categories. But yes, we did do a study on that, and we do have to kind of keep to what we have in our ordinance, so we tried to make it very similar. We just made the categories a little bit more broader.
Yeah, I was hoping we'd have a presentation for the public to see it with some, you know, what do we condense it down to? Can we get that for the second reading?
Absolutely. I can have that made.
Okay.
Just so it's a little more, there's more explanation for the people that can see.
Yep, absolutely. We can do that.
Other questions, councilmembers? I have one. I think you might have answered it, but I'd like to flesh it out a little further. So, my question was going to be, if you apply the new categories and the corresponding tax rates and structures, and, because under the different schemes, some of it's based on the number of employees, some of it's based on the number of trucks, you know, there's different ways of calculating. My assumption is that some businesses would go up a little and some would go down a little, depending, you know, as we read, okay, they used to be in this category, but number 642 is being eliminated, and now they're in this category, which results in a small increase. So, my question, well, there's a couple of questions related to this, and one is, I'm sure you have, have we run the calculations to see is, what's the maximum that somebody's going up? Because if you're a very big business and you say, "Well, it's only going up a percent," but that could be a lot of money. One percent of a lot of money is a lot of money. And have we identified that specifically? Is there anybody in the city who's going to say, "Oh, my gosh, look what, you've put me in another category, and now my tax bill went up $75,000," or something like that? Have we looked at that? The other thing related to that is if you take the whole aggregate of this, the whole thing, some go up a little, some go down a little, what's the net loss or gain to our revenues as a result of these new categories? Are we boosting our revenues by 2% or 3%? I mean, no, that's not the purpose of what we're doing, but what's the result? Is our revenue going to go up or down or stay neutral? What's the financial impact to the city?
So, let me address each question for you. Yes, with the calculations, as we are going through this system and this process, what we did is we took a selection of, from different categories, and put them into this new fee schedule to see where do they come at. So, when we looked at, for instance, by employee, we ran a schedule to make sure if we limit this down and narrow it down to not have so many different categories, where is it putting people? And there was no one that was above or below a difference of like $1,000, and that's when we're getting into big, big numbers. Now, the majority of people were within a couple dollars. The other thing with the revenue, looking at that, that is something that we are putting together. It's a lot of different categories, so we're trying to take a selection. We were planning on having that for the second reading, so I can definitely put that into the presentation that we create. That way, you can kind of see where does it go. With all the categories, we have not had a lot of businesses updating their information. A lot of the different businesses we have in the system from when they first began, so we don't know if their employee counts are correct, if their inventory is correct, so there is a chance that there could be some changes just due to updated information, and that was part of why we wanted to get this new system out, is to kind of clean up our records. So, that's a piece that, you know, we know could be a variant in there, but we are working on getting that to see as close as possible, do we have everything in place.
So, it's hard to say with any kind of precision whether our revenues will go up or down or stay fairly the same.
Correct, due to the fact that we don't know if we have the business owner's correct information. So, this will be, it'll be good, because we're going to be getting all updated information. We're going to be getting, everyone will be, because some peoples might go down. Now, another piece of that is if we, let's say we took two different categories and we merged them into one, and we put them under a broad thing, we took the lowest fee for that. So, if somebody was paying only $57.87, and this group was paying $115.76, they're now getting the $57.87, because again, per Florida State statute, we cannot raise anyone. So, we wanted to make sure that we have, we always took the lower. Now, if some, if a business owner has not given us all the information, and now that we are getting the new system and we get updated information on them, yes, their, their business tax receipt can go up, but that would only be due to updating the information.
Right. They would only be paying what they should have been paying all along.
Correct.
So, okay. I'll leave it at that. Okay, so, second reading, you're going to try to get...
Revenue status.
A little more precise on the forecasted revenue, impact to the revenue, and we'll be able to give a more in-depth visual presentation for the public.
Could I ask a question, the city attorney? Pam, if we vote yes to the, to the first reading, and then the information...
By the way, this is councilmember Schisler. Let me recognize you, so we know who's talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I forgot where I was. If we vote yes on tonight, and additional information bubbles up that becomes, well, we're not really sure we want to do this. Could we, we could delay it at the second one till we get better results?
You're talking about delaying the second reading to get...
No, no. No, no, I'm saying, what I'm saying, the first reading we pass tonight, and they go back and they're working on some analytics, and if the analytics come back that it's untenable to some, to, somebody really gets hammered, or, or we find a flaw with the, with the logic, can we delay it at that point to another, to another time to, to better refine the formulas?
Yes, you're, I mean, you're not compelled to vote...
Okay.
Yes, again, on the second reading.
Well, I don't want to kill it and then have to start the whole process all over again, because then it just, it just...
It can, it can be tabled.
Okay.
It can be continued. It can, you know, we would have to, we might have to re-advertise it, but that's the only thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Council vice mayor Abel.
Along with these changes, is there going to be a procedure in place that's going to bring about more frequent updates from the businesses about what they are doing?
Yes. This new, this new program that we are implementing is going to make it so that they can go online. Every year, they'll be able to go in and update themselves. At this moment, currently, they would have to physically come in here, redo an application, send all that information in, whereas each year, they're going to get a link sent email right to them. They'll go into the link, it'll take them right into their profile, and it'll say, "Do you have any changes?" And then it'll walk them through, and it'll ask every year for those items that they are calculated on. It's going to ask them for their inventory, it's going to ask them for their employee counts, it's going to ask them for any state licenses, and, et cetera, anything that would need, we would need to have and that we are required to have.
So, really streamlining the process.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
That is the system that we have now or the system that we're moving towards?
The one that we are moving towards. So, that is one of the things we have, we got the, they pushed out a tester phase, I guess, for us, and that's where we've been starting to run these revenues. So, we are, we got it about a week ago, and we're starting to look through each of the different businesses. We've picked a couple in the main categories, each category we've done, each of those four main ones, and everything is very similar, and if it's not similar, it's lower.
Okay. Councilmember Schisler.
Thank you. Is there any, with, within our ordinance, is there any, any teeth to requiring businesses to update? We can say, "Please do this," and what is it?
It states that we are able to, not only are we able to request the information, we are able to audit them, so we could send code out there to audit them.
And code would take care of that?
Correct.
All right.
Other questions?
Good.
Very good. If there are no further questions, I will ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the, oh, one second. Yep, sorry. An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Section 14-72, Schedule of Local Business Taxes to Be Paid, Tax Levied, Panel Required, and Amounts to Be Paid, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for an Effective Date.
Madam clerk, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
Move to approve first reading ordinance amending code section 14-72 local business tax.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Just the only comments I have are, we've already said, next reading will have a visual presentation, and we'll hopefully have some more precise forecasts.
Yes, sir.
Can I request, as part of this...
Councilmember Fernandez.
As part of this presentation, that you bring in maybe some business examples?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a real business, but just an example of a business and what the impact would be, maybe example, old system, new system, just for more visual clarity.
And then it'll walk them through and it'll ask every year, for those items that they are calculated on, it's going to ask them for their inventory, it's going to ask them for their employee counts, it's going to ask them for any state licenses and, and et cetera, anything that would need, we would need to have and that we are required to have.
So really streamlining the process.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
That is the system that we have now or the system that we're moving towards?
The one that we are moving towards. So that is one of the things we have, we got the, they pushed out a tester phase, I guess, for us and that's where we've been starting to run these revenues. So we are, we got it about a week ago and we're starting to look through each of the different businesses. We've picked a couple in the main categories, each category we've done, each of those four main ones, and everything is very similar and if it's not similar, it's lower.
Okay, Councilmember Schisler.
Thank you. Is there any, within our ordinance, is there any, any teeth to requiring businesses to update? We can say, please do this and what is it?
It states that we are able to, not only are we able to request the information, we are able to audit them. So we could send code out there to audit them.
And code would take care of that?
Correct.
All right.
Other questions?
Good.
Very good. If there are no further questions, I will ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida amending the, oh, one second, yep, sorry. An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida amending the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Section 14-72, Schedule of Local Business Taxes to be Paid, Tax Levied, Payment Required, and Amounts to be Paid Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, Providing for an Effective Date.
Madam Clerk, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
Move to approve first reading ordinance amending code section 14-72 local business tax.
Second. Motion to second, discussion? Just the only comments I have, we've already said, next reading will have a visual presentation and we'll hopefully have some more precise forecasts.
Yes, sir.
Can I request as part of this-
Councilmember Fernandez.
As part of this presentation that you bring in maybe some business examples?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a real business, but just an example of a business and what the impact would be, maybe example, old system, new system, just for more visual clarity.
Absolutely.
Other comments? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, motion is, ordinance is adopted on first reading, will appear for second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2024. Thank you, Ms. Devey. Next is the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1568 enacting Article 4, Section 16-95 and 16-96, City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances prohibiting camping and sleeping on public property and rights of way. We'll open a public hearing and our Deputy City Attorney, Ernie Mueller, is here to explain.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Just a quick refresher, we're here for second reading. This is, as we all know, there's a state law going into effect October 1, which is going to require the city to address people sleeping on the right of way and on public property. And what this ordinance is doing is setting forth a procedure and a process for our police department to handle those situations. Here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller, other members of the public who wish to comment on this item. Seeing none, Councilmember, questions for Mr. Mueller? Okay, very good. If there are no questions, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida creating Article 4, Camping and Sleeping on Public Property and Rights of Way under Chapter 16 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances, creating Section 16-95 camping prohibited exemptions, creating Section 16-96 sleeping in or on the rights of way, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Very good. Councilmembers, is there a motion?
To approve on second reading, excuse me, ordinance number 1568 enacting Article 4, Section 16-95, 16-96 prohibiting, City Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances prohibiting camping and sleeping on public property and rights of way.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays, ordinance is adopted on second reading. Thank you for your work on this, thank you Chief for your work on this. Next is council business. Carryover business is a consideration of potential street art locations and it says that I will explain this, so I guess I'll take, I'll wing it, how's that? So for anybody watching, the city, oh, I don't know, a year, maybe two years ago, but at least last year, we decided to start a, a small contribution in our budget or to program some money in our budget for public art. And we're still working on the bugs in this, but we're going to start displaying public art in some of our buildings here in City Hall, Rec Center, the library, Lightfoot and display some of art from our local artists. And part of this campaign is also wall murals, you'll see some wall murals going up on some of, on this building and some of our other buildings, like local, welcome to Temple Terrace kind of stuff. In addition to that, we're talking about pavement murals, art murals at prominent intersections within the city. And so in moving forward with that, staff has identified a few locations that we could consider for our first pavement art under this program. We already have one, but the first one under this new program. So we have a list of locations and it's, like everything in government, it's a little more complicated than it seems because we had to consider how old is the pavement, is it due for repaving, are we going to be doing stormwater projects or utility work in the area? We don't want to put down a beautiful art mural and then dig it up next year to put a water pipe in or something. So we have come up with, our staff has recommended to us some locations and the following locations are for our consideration are White Way and 53rd, Serena and 52nd, Serena and 53rd, or Mission Hills and 53rd. And I believe that we are here to select one of those to be the first one. This doesn't mean that the other four were in no particular order, but we're looking to pick one of those four locations to be the first one. And so are there members of the public that would like to provide input on this? Okay, I see none. So council members, which one? Councilmember Chambers.
Okay, well, I, I brought this up to the Arts Council, Temple Terrace Arts Council on, last Tuesday's meeting and they liked all four and, well, that's the backstory, they liked all four. It was kind of torn between White Way and 53rd, but really the first choice, and I kind of led that, so I kind of may have influenced them to be Serena and 52nd, which is the entrance to our city right by the park there. The merit of White Way and 53rd is, that's the intersection to Florida, to City Hall here also, it's the intersection to Publix. I mean, everybody goes down that, that road. So, but it is, 53rd is not the entrance to the city, it's the, 52nd's the entrance, but there's merit to that. So my suggestion, just my suggestion would be 52nd and Serena first. The Arts Council feels with the money we have left, and it's somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000, that it could possibly get two this year. So maybe we could get an order rank on that, so.
Okay.
But anyway, that's, that's the Arts Council's recommendation and my personal recommendation.
Mr. B, do you see anything wrong with the council picking one and two?
Yes, sir.
Ranking them in that order, that way we don't-
Any of the council, any of the Arts Council's willing to move forward?
Yeah, that way we don't have to do this whole-
And, and the procedure would be, the Arts Council, again, is in the, in the middle of it, once the location is picked, they will go out and do an RFP for the artist to get proposals and then whichever, the final design's coming here first. I mean, before it gets done, we will approve the design of the artwork, so it's not just left to the Arts Council.
Did I hear you correctly that in your opinion Serena and 52nd should be number one and maybe White Way and 53rd should be number two?
Yes. And when I say Serena and 52nd, you know, the, the park is on, between 52nd and 53rd, so we could, we could get both those out of the way. I mean, not in the intersections, but we could kind of get one closer to the middle of the park if we want to do that.
Okay. Council?
I concur, that's the conclusion I came to as well. I like that best.
Joe?
I like White Way and 53rd, second, I like Serena. Were you saying between 52nd and 53rd and Serena in the middle?
The park is more on the 52nd stop.
Okay, okay. All right, I concur.
Also?
I just thought we should do it wherever we have the most traffic that would see it, so I, whatever the recommendation is from-
Yeah, well, actually, I, I don't know if the police never have ever done a traffic study out there, but my, my gut feeling is 53rd and White Way has a little bit more traffic, but White Way used to have, and I, I've looked and I didn't see it, but it used to have some brick, fake brick at the entrance on White Way coming in from there and I don't know with the paving that just happened, if that all went away.
I think it might be gone.
I think it's gone. So we used to have an entrance feature there.
My only, I mean, I'll, if that's what the majority thinks, then that's in the Arts Council, I'm going to follow your lead. My only thought while you were talking is that if we do it at Serena and 52nd, 53rd, everybody's going to give Tampa the credit for this. Nobody's going to realize that this is Temple Terrace. They're going to think that, oh, look what Tampa's done. I don't know.
Yeah.
But-
Not, not a bad point.
And 53rd and White Way seems to get quite a lot of traffic through there.
And 53rd and White Way has been redone and there are very defined crosswalks, so it kind of makes a border
Yeah.
For that, if that's a consideration.
Well, I don't-
I'm not against it.
I, far be it from me to go against the Arts Council, but it seems like White Way and 53rd has a lot more, anyway.
Did I hear you correctly?
Vice Mayor Abel.
Did I hear you correctly, Councilmember Chambers, when you said that there, there's the possibility of maybe doing two at this time or did I misunderstand that?
It depends on the, it depends on the cost of the artist. The paint is pretty much standard, I don't know what that would be, but an artist may, an artist may charge a thousand, another one may charge 2,000, so it just kind of depends on what we get on that. But it's, this is not the only one we're going to do, we can have this kind of list and there's money in next year's budget.
Well, I was going to say, we're pretty close to October 1st when we're replenishing this fund, so I don't see why we couldn't do both of them.
Right.
We could do that.
Yeah, I, because even if there's none of them-
I mean, if we approve it today by, Mr. City Manager, the money, the remaining money is going to have to roll over because, is that what you were just talking about?
Yeah, we were just talking about that because these are fiscal $24, so if you could encumber it before the end of the fiscal year, that would be the simplest option, otherwise we would have to figure out a way to-
We could fast track, at least get the artist agreement
Right.
In there, but I don't know if I have time to get it on the agenda for one of the September meetings to approve the design.
But if we had an artist agreement with the design to be approved later, doesn't that encumber the funds?
Seems like it would.
We could encumber it anyway.
Right.
Then we're going to do it.
Also, the other wrinkle here is you, we have programmed the same amount of money in FY25 budget too, so you do have that. There are dollars in 25 as well, so if, if that was a concern.
Even by passing the resolution to approve the general project, we could encumber the, the budget at that, can't we?
Okay, well, let's not lose sight of the issue before us.
Let's pick the location.
The issue before us is to pick the location.
Do we have a motion?
And then all the money stuff is not what we're here to decide, that's for-
Recognized.
Right, so.
But we may need to have council action in order for them to do that. That's my only concern.
They know where to find us.
Okay.
All right, so am I correct in this, that we're just trying to decide the location?
That's as far as I was concerned.
And then you guys can get together offline and figure out how to encumber the-
The next council meeting, we'll have, we'll have it in their direction, yeah.
Okay, so both Serena and White Way and 53rd?
Yes.
Right, yes, number one. So I move that the first public art, street, street public art location would be Serena and 53rd or, close to the entrance of the park on Serena, possibly between 52nd and 53rd. And then the second street art location would be White Way and 53rd.
Second. Motion to second by Councilmember Schisler, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no nays? You got some fiscal stuff to figure out?
We got it.
Okay.
We'll get done.
Any other carryover council business?
I, I have one thing.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez.
And it's really just, it's really more for the public and that is, for those of you, anybody on social media and you see the Temple Terrace bulletin board or you see people posting things to Facebook and they're asking questions specifically about things happening in the city, the, you know, sometimes a building project might come up and I just want to make sure that, for people listening, that they understand city council is not supposed to answer you on a social media platform. So if you have questions regarding city issues or, or things happening in the city, I urge you to contact the city staff or a city council person directly so that we can answer your questions because we are not supposed to be responding to you on a social media platform. So that's it.
Good. Any other carryover council business? I have one, no, I don't under this. Any new business or board reports? Councilmember Chambers.
Right, it's along the same lines of the art project. I hope people notice the art in the hallway of City Hall. The art that's there now is what is called our practice art. The artworks have been donated for this brief time by members of the Arts Council from their homes and everything, some other, other art too, from some city employees. It's up there, it was a learning process so we could learn how to hang them, how the, the hangers work, the locks, the lights, all that. It's up, the name placards about each piece was put up this afternoon, so it's out there. So on the way out, look at it, it's, it's pretty nice. In these, we, we hope to have new artists work in December. On all calls going out, I have a presentation to make to the Hillsborough County Arts Council on September the 3rd to get the word out to the local artists so we can start our program, so.
Thank you. Any other new business or board reports? I have one quick thing to report, I'm just really proud, I want to brag about the city a little bit. You know, I, I go to the Florida League of Mayors Conference and Florida League of Cities Conference every year, League of Mayors Conference is one day and then it rolls into FLC the following days. And so the way this conference is conducted is there are breakout groups, many of you have been, so you know, but the public, your breakout groups, you choose which ones you want to go to. This year I went to, I don't know how many, you just pick which ones you want to go to and, and every one of them that I went to, I'm sitting in a room with mayors, council members from all over the state of Florida, big cities, small cities, and every workshop I went to, we were all over what the speaker was talking about. Temple Terrace was already out in front of it, we knew about it, in some cases we had already drafted an ordinance about it, we had already restructured our public works, we had done different things. I didn't go to one single workshop, and I'm sad to say this, I didn't learn as much as I used to learn because we're on it. And, and used to be I'd spend the week going around saying, oh, tell me what you do so I can try to take something back. Now people are coming to us and saying, oh, you've already drafted an ordinance on that? Would you email that to me or what'd you do with this or how did you get, how did you achieve that? And that, folks, is all due to the work that you have done. The past couple of years, we've asked more of you, you're working harder, we know it. But we are out in front, we are no longer, I, I spent, there was a room I went to, it was probably 75 different people in there and they were talking about the ordinance we passed on second reading about the new homeless law that came out that takes effect in October. There were probably 50 people in there that that was the first they heard of this. They had no idea what the cities were required to do and what this meant and truthfully, after the end of it, I'm not sure they knew much more than they did at the beginning, but, so I, I can't tell you how proud I am of the work that all of you are doing. It really has, it, it just shows, it really does, I'm very proud of you, so. And that's it. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments and good evening, everybody. So I have one item on the, in the backup and that is the quarterly report, actual versus budget of financials. We, we tried to get this in last one or two meetings ago and we had the other, the bulk of the reports, but as you can imagine, Mr. Ingram was pretty swamped with the budget, so I gave him a pass. So that's in here, if you have any questions, either he or myself are ready to answer.
Councilmember Schisler?
Good.
No questions?
Good.
First time in history, Mr. Schisler's had no questions about a financial report. Anybody, any questions? Okay, thank you, is that it?
That is it.
All right. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Any other business to come before the council, council members, anything, directors, you just want to go home, right? Thank you again for all your hard work, it goes, it is not unnoticed and very much appreciated, so we will stand adjourned.